The time is 4:06 and we call this workshop on the insurance of for Wesco ISD to order.
Dr. Alejandro?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. The Board, as we're getting closer to the end of the year and we're getting ready to start taking a look at our self-funded health benefits, the Board wanted to go ahead and take a look at the plan that we have and try to get some information from our staff in terms of, you know, what they were actually experiencing with the insurance. So this workshop was called so that we can go ahead and get that information. We've invited the insurance committee and we've invited the principals to make sure that they were here. And I have Mr. De La Rosa that is going to be providing a little presentation. Mr. De La Rosa?
Good afternoon, members of the Board. Dr. Alejandro, the committee, thank you all for being here. I'm kind of be, I have the wireless mic with me because I'm addressing the Board and addressing the committee. I don't want to give my back to anybody. So I'll go ahead and get started. I'm going to go ahead and present six or seven slides and kind of give a high level overview of the plan and what we're doing and of course, open it up to any discussions and questions that you might have. Okay.
Hello?
I guess we'll go the old fashioned way.
Batteries.
Okay. The first thing I'd like to do, just for the members of the audience, members of the committee, members of the public that might not know 100%, I'm going to give you a little self-funded 101, okay? Wesco ISD partially self-funds its health insurance benefit plan. What does that mean exactly? We mean, we self-fund our plan because the district's health plan assumes $100,000 of liability for all the medical claims that hit per member. That includes employees and your dependents, children, spouse, if you have them on the plan, okay? A third-party administrator, in this case, it's Frates Benefit Administrators, is hired to adjudicate all the claims. What does that mean by adjudicate? You go to the doctor, the doctor submits a claim or a bill to Frates. Frates processes it, sends it to the network to get repriced, brings it back, and then cuts a check to the provider from Wesco ISD funds, okay? A preferred provider organization or a PPO is rented. In this case, it's Independent Medical Systems or IMS. This is when we say you need, make sure you go to a provider that's in-network. What that means is that the IMS, in this case, has contracts with these hospitals and doctors for you to go. Wesco ISD enjoys a negotiated savings or rate and you in turn do not get balance billed for the remainder of the bill. Finally, a pharmacy benefit manager is hired, a PBM. This is currently Max Care. This is a company that adjudicates all your prescription benefits. When you go to the drugstore, you have a prescription, it goes through the pharmacy benefit manager. But keep in mind that even though we have a pharmacy benefit manager and a third-party administrator, all of this comes out of Wesco ISD's fund or healthcare, health insurance fund. And of course, we purchase individual and aggregate stop-loss. What does that mean? If you go back to the first or the second bullet there, that means that we assume $100,000 liability for, the first $100,000 liability for our claims, what that means is after that $100,000 is hit, the reinsurance takes over and reimburses us for all the claims above $100,000. Just a quick comparison that compares some of our benefits. We are the only district in the valley, actually south of San Antonio, that has an exclusive provider network. What does that mean? Of course, there's certain facilities and physicians that participate in this EPO and individuals that go there realize a lower deductible. In this case, it's $250 and $750 for the family. We're the only district that offers this, okay? Everyone outside the EPO is called the preferred provider network or PPO network. We have a $750 deductible and of course, you can see there's some other school districts that have, San Benito's, for example, a $2,000, Harlingen $1,500, Donna $750 deductible, PSJA $750, Macallan-Eddenberg coming out $1,000. And this is for the base plan, okay? You move into your office co-pays. We have physicians that are in our exclusive provider network, employees who utilize those facilities enjoy a $5 co-pay and a $10 co-pay for a specialist. Everybody else falls into the PPO network. Our co-pay there is 15 and of course, you see here 30, 35, 25, 15 for San Benito, 30 and 30 for Macallan-Eddenberg, okay? Our generic, we have a two-tier program for our pharmacy, which means you have a $10 co-pay, a $30 co-pay, and then of course, you get into a specialty drugs where you have a $100 co-pay. And these are the other co-pays that other districts charge for their members, okay? Of course, you have a 90-day supply, which is for maintenance medications. We pay zero or employee pays a $0 co-pay and of course, it's $75 for brand-name drugs. And it compares it to the other districts there as well. Just don't worry if you can't see it, I'll email everybody here, copy this presentation, okay? And of course, you have the cost. Wesco ISD on the base plan, we don't charge anything per employee. San Benito charges $128, Harlingen is at zero, Donna's at 15, PSJA is also at zero, and you have 52 and 60 for Macallan-Eddenberg. So very, very comparable benefits, very good benefits. You're not going to be able to see this very clearly, but like I said, I'll email this out to everybody. This is a five-year or actually a five-and-a-half-year trend of where our health plan has come in. As you can tell, it goes to Humana from 2009 to 2010, all the way to current. There's also another line that I want you to notice, which is the red line or the orange line, which is ISO claimants, okay? These are the people that of course, hit that $100,000 or that individual stop-loss level, okay? We're self-funded, so all of this is relevant. So if you look at Humana, 11.1 million in 2009, 2010, you go to Blue Cross, 10-11, 10.1 million, we had three ISO claimants. 2011, 2012 went up to 10.7 with three ISO claimants. 2012 to 2013, we had 11.4 million with five ISO claimants. 13, 14, 12 ISO claimants with 12.3 million. And then last year, 14-15, we had 14.5 million with a total of five ISO claimants, okay? So these are individuals that went over the $100,000 threshold, okay? So that's that-
Mike, excuse me, you said five or 15?
15, I'm sorry. 15 for 14-15. So of course, you can see a trend there of, you know, every year we see a trend where costs are going up and then we had that big spike in 14-15 and that of course, was significantly higher ISO claimants. Another thing that we have to take in mind is, or keep in mind, is that there was additional 30 who went anywhere from 50 to $99,000, okay? For various reasons, I mean, you can't, nobody's at fault, you know, the self-funded market, these things happen.
And that's for 14 and 15?
It's for 14-15. This year, we've got-
Can you give me the numbers as far as back as you can to see? I know we have 10-11, we have three, 11-12, we have three, and so on up to the 12 of 13 and 14, but see how many fell between the 50 and just under 100,000?
You want to go back for all those years?
For those years, please.
I can get you that. Okay, that being said, we have a lot of challenges facing our plan right now. And one of the things that's affecting us cost-wise is that Wesco ISD is no longer considered a grandfathered plan under the Affordable Care Act, better known as Obamacare, okay? What does that mean for the plan? Now we have to cover preventative screenings at 100%. We have to cover dependents through age 26 and of course, we're subject to transitional reinsurance fee, which is a fee we pay the government. And of course, the PCOR fee, which is a patient-centered outreach recovery fee. And I apologize for using a lot of technical jargon, you know? I'll try and keep that in mind. And healthcare costs are going up. We see it, we see it every day. There's a Kaiser Foundation study that in 2015, the average single premium, I'm talking about what people pay for health insurance, is anywhere is $548. That's an average.
And the average premium is $15?
$39 per family.
What do we pay, Mike, per employee?
We fund $380 per employee per month.
So well under the average?
Well under the average, that's correct. And of course, premiums have increased approximately 61% from 2001 to 2015. And that's important because as premiums increase, that means costs increase.
Mike, can I note through-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Because of budget concerns, why have we not increased the fund balance per employee? When was the last change?
Back in, the last time was with Humana, when we moved over in '09, '10, I believe the district went from 290 to 380. And there were some issues going back with our prior TPA. We're in litigation with that right now. But we funded 380 and that line or that amount of funding has stayed consistent whereas our costs have risen throughout the years. But we were able to maintain still a fund balance, but of course, that is, you know, a reserve as you will. But that of course-
The Board had asked us to, two things, that to do everything possible to maintain the same funding and to continue to provide the same benefits. So we have been successful, but ever since I came on Board, I had been advising the Board that this day was going to come because, and again, it's just simply because the insurance industry keeps increasing the rates and a lot of it has to do with R&amp;D, research and development, the increasing cost of medications and drugs. Now with the research that has increased the lifespan of a lot of citizens because of the new drugs, but because they're designer drugs in most cases, you know, they come at a very expensive cost. So those are the kind of things that have been steadily driving and I saw this trend coming, so that's why I had been mentioning to the Board. But we're finally at a point that we are going to have to seriously look at, in order for us to be able to maintain the same benefit that we pay for the employees, you know, we're not going to be able to do that. We're going to have to increase that, but of course, that's going to increase our budget. And right now, the budget still looks kind of tight. We've been real lucky with the elves. They have really been, what has saved us this year. But we don't know when this current trend of the enrollment is going to turn around, because it will, but we don't know if it's next year, if it's the following year. And until we have an increase in the enrollment and an increase on the ADA, you know, we will have a very tight budget again. But that's the main reason that we haven't increased it because I know that in order to remain as progressive as we have been, you know, we need to fund a lot of the programs that we have because there's only, the pie is only so big. So in order to put more money into the insurance, we have to get it from somewhere.
One of the other challenges that we have right now is the price of prescription medication. Within the district ourselves, 78% or 78% of the top 200 drugs that are dispensed to our employees had an average wholesale price increase of, had an average wholesale price increase during 2015. The largest percent increase was 200% and then the average increase for the rest of the drugs was 18.9% or 19%. Of course, we see that every day, you know, stories of the news of drug companies, you know, trying to do everything they can to make as much as they can. And unfortunately, that cost is passed down to us.
What type of medications are we looking at, at the 200%?
Some of them are for cancer and some of them are for heart disease, the same three. I know that we went to providing free diabetic supplies to employees because what we found out is that some employees were not getting their supplies because of the co-pays, things like that. So we went to providing free supplies so that they can maintain, checking their blood and making sure that they maintain their sugar levels.
Add strips and stuff like that? Okay.
Some of the drugs mentioned, of course, Victoza, very popular drug, you see that on TV all the time. That averages around $5,000 a month. Humira averages around $10,000 a month.
We do have some that are up to 15 and 20,000, right?
That's correct. Some of the high-end cancer drugs, Gunevic, run about $25,000 a month.
For a single shot?
Hmm?
For a single shot?
For, yeah.
So our employee would pay $100? And we-
The plan picks up the rest.
$24,900, okay.
Mike, let me bother you real quick. We have, you have the, in 2014-15, you have 14,500,000 as costs. Then in 2015-16, you have 8 million. How many months do we have left and do you have a projection of where we're going to be?
I'm anticipating we're going to be around 14.5 to 15 million.
So the same.
We're actually trending, and I have Rick Franklin here from Frates, he can chime in anytime, but we're actually trending lower. What you see on this report, on the last year, a lot of that, a big percentage of that, is run out from the previous year, okay? So and actually, on a month-to-month, our claims are starting to trend down a little bit, but the way we report data is we report paid data. If you look on those figures that are there, they're going to match with on our audit. So, and like I said, there's an incurred wave reported and then a paid wave. We always present the Board with paid data. But you know, Rick, if you want to chime in, currently, where are we trending now?
On a plan year basis?
I'm sorry, Rick Franklin with Frates Benefit Administrators.
Dr. Alejandro? My name is Rick Franklin. I'm with Frates Benefit Administrators, with the third-party administrator for the plan. Do you want me to, you want to see one?
Use the mic? No, just go ahead.
Okay. What we're, on an incurred basis, which is your plan year, from September 1, 2014 through 8/31/2015, and then beginning again, September 1 of last year through the end of February of this year, that's six months and you're running at about 40% of where you were last year. So we're a little bit ahead of where we were last year. It's not quite, once again, these are paid numbers, which are cash numbers, but on an incurred basis, you made some changes back on the 1st of September for this year, mainly you switched to PPO networks and that is beginning to show fruition. You're having a higher amount of PPO savings. So you're, on an incurred basis, you're not having as bad a year as you had last year, so far through February.
We do have a slide if you want us to put it up on that.
No, go ahead, continue. Sorry.
Go ahead, okay. Let me get back to the RX, of course. So these are the potential cost-saving recommendations that we have for the 16, 17-year that we'll bring into the Board and of course, that we've discussed with the committee. We need to adjust our PPO co-pay amount to go ahead and coincide with what the other districts are charging. For example, our PPO co-pay is $15 and as you saw on the previous slide, everybody else is at 30 or 35 across the board for a PPO. The EPO will remain the same, okay? We have been throwing around the idea of a health assessment program. This is probably something that won't, we won't pretty much have into effect until later on next year. This is very big in the private sector where an employee is charged, say, $200 a month for their health insurance, okay? But if they go in and do a healthcare assessment, which includes a blood work, then that significantly reduces the cost they pay for their insurance premiums, okay? And of course, people who don't participate are penalized with a higher premium. So we did recently have a blood draw a few months ago and we have that every year.
Out of all our employees?
Approximately 620 employees took advantage of the blood draw out of 2,300. So that's not a very, that's not a very good percentage.
But let me just interject that the blood draws, we will continue to have them because they have proven very successful in the sense that we have had some employees that have been identified and for whatever reason, they don't, either they don't feel the symptoms or they're in denial or whatever the case is, but once I get the report, some of them have gone to the doctor and have made life-changing changes in their life and that of course, is a benefit to our employees, which we always want to take care of.
I've had calls where, I get a call if there's a critical level in an employee, say, you know, employee XYZ is glucose at 620, I mean, they need to get to the doctor now. So we contact that employee and we advise them, can't force them to go, but we definitely advise them what's going on. And then of course, our current EPO facility, our exclusive provider network, we need to reevaluate some of the facilities that are in our EPO and maybe even consider eliminating all or certain facilities. And the reason being is that the direct contracts we have in place, but some of them are the same, mirror image of our current, of the contract the PPO provider has in place.
So no beneficial statements?
None at all. In fact, we're losing money because we're, we enhance, we incentivize the employees to go there because of the lower deductible. But in essence-
That's where they pay the 250?
Yeah. In one facility, who will be nameless at this time, we're not getting a good deal. But another facility, we're getting a very, very good deal.
How many facilities do we have? NAP, DHR, and who else?
NAP, DHR, and Harlingen, it's Harlingen Medical Center. That's tied in with NAP. Prime, I believe? Prime Healthcare. They went private, of course.
Nothing in Macallan?
DHR and Macallan.
Okay, that's Edinburgh, okay.
Well, across the street near Macallan, yeah.
Okay.
Some of the other things that we're looking at, which is gaining a lot of popularity, I'm just going to touch on this briefly. This is called an accountable care organization. This will take another workshop and if we decide to go down this road, we'll have, we'll have more workshops on this. But what an accountable care organization is, is a group of doctors and other healthcare providers who work together to provide high quality of service and care. Does that say something, sorry? So basically, what this is, is a group of doctors that get together and manage your care from the time you go in to see this physician, if you need to go, for example, God forbid, you're diagnosed with cancer, okay? What the ACO will do is coordinate and schedule all of your subsequent screenings, whether it be MRIs, CAT scans, chemotherapy, and basically bring it all together versus you as an employee going out and trying to schedule all these things and trying to get results from the radiologist, back to the physician, and so forth and so forth. So it eliminates a lot of the red tape between the different providers. On the other hand, we negotiate really, really, really good rates with the ACO. And in turn, at the end of the day, the physicians in the ACO have a financial interest and the employee often right, you know, where they-
Back at work.
Right where they need to be. This is very, very big in Medicare right now. In fact, Medicare uses it throughout their system. So as a Medicare patient, you have no choice. You're in this ACO, okay? How we would do it is we would find a way to incentivize employees to utilize the ACO versus signing on to the base higher state plan. But like I said, this is, this is just the tip of the iceberg. This is something we're looking at.
So if Mr. Lopez is my provider, my healthcare provider, my doctor, I got something with my heart, he sends me to another provider within their ACO-
Correct.
Let's say a cardiologist.
Correct.
They work out the monies as to what they're going to pay?
And more importantly, how they're managing your care, okay? Because there's, all the people in the ACO, the facilities and the physicians, they talk to each other, they're wired in basically, they're part of the same ACO, okay? So at the end of the day, there's a financial incentive for the physicians to get you better and to get you, get you to a better quality of life, okay? If they don't, for whatever reason, then, I'm not going to say there's a penalty for them, but there's a financial disinterest, if you will. So to get you better, they make money if they don't-
So they work harder to get us better?
Correct. In a nutshell.
So it's based on outcomes?
That's correct.
What was that?
The question was if it's based on outcomes. It says yes. The answer to that is yes.
Have they standardized outcomes or they are all?
Well, like I said, that's, this is the tip of the iceberg. We'll have to, it's more complicated than that because it's through Medicare. I mean, we're following Medicare base, but I've seen some studies where the cost of Medicare has gone down significantly in a lot of areas once the ACOs have been introduced and once they sign up for the ACOs. And like I said, the last bullet I had was replay, if we were to consider going with this, if we ever did this in the future, we would replace the EPO network with an ACO. Okay? And like I said, that's something that's, several more workshops down the road. This is just the tip of the iceberg. And finally, we talked a little bit about funding. What we're proposing this year is to increase the funding from 380 to 430 per employee per month.
So we're working out that-
Yes, bring it out. Total projected funding for '16, '17 would be 14 million dollars. That includes premium, premiums that the employees pay for a higher plan and for adding their dependents. We're also looking at a 3% increase in dependent rates for '16, '17. So before everybody starts to complain, we haven't had an increase in that in over five years. So it's time to catch up to trend. But on the bright side, we're looking this year, or '16, '17, offering an employee-
Plus one child.
Employee plus one child per tier.
And we don't have that currently.
Not right now, no. And that's all I've got. If anybody has any discussions or questions, mic's open.
Yeah, well, this is a workshop, and that's why we, as a board, decided to bring it on or put this on so that we could have the committee, insurance committee here. If there's any concerns or any questions, it's right now. You know, Mike, another thing that I would like to see from you is, this is very good information. I like it. I'm sure the employees are going to, you know, appreciate it. Try to put together a monthly newsletter or a quarterly newsletter, just to bring people up to speed of do's and don'ts, per se, on, you know, I know that in the beginning, everybody had the idea of going to the hospital, and we know that that's not the way to do it.
Right.
You know, so yet, some people might not have gotten that message.
We can do that.
So- To touch on Mo, I know I've spoken to you about our website, and I know Carlos is back there in the back, but some of the complaints that I've gotten is, how do we know where the doctor's list is that fit whether it's the PPO or EPO? And make it easier, I guess, you know, kind of just click, here's a list of doctors under whatever it is, specialty, just a regular provider, just to make it easier for the employee, just to click here under help button?
I mentioned earlier that, excuse me for using a lot of technical jargon, so when you presented that to me, we went back and looked at the website and changed a lot of the technical jargon or abbreviations to something that, you know, people can understand, you know, and then hopefully, that's improved a little bit. But as far as design, you know, changes, that's another thing I'd have to work out with Carlos. Because that's not just the risk management page, it's the entire-
No, I know, that's why, that's why I'm asking Carlos if there is a way to make it just that much more easier, where they can just click on a button and know what they're looking for.
Like I said, we did change it-
Thank you.
So that way, it's, you know, this network, click here, and it's in English, if you will.
I haven't clicked on it lately, so thank you for listening.
Dr. Alejandro, any comments?
No, just that, as you mentioned earlier, Mr. Lopez said that this is a workshop, so please, now is the opportune time to bring up anything that you would like to say either for or against the insurance or anything at all. We definitely are looking forward to input from the committee and from the principals. That'll, because that's going to shape the decisions that we make here in the near future.
Yeah. As a board, we get to see, or we get to hear only what the information we're provided, you know? Y'all live it every day. It's your insurance, and that's what I want to make sure that y'all are happy, that you're being well taken care of, and that we're providing you with the best insurance available. So now's the time.
Okay, well, I just had a concern with the ACO that he's talking about that might be coming up in the future. I feel that as employees, we should be given a choice. I kind of like the way it is right now that we have a choice between going to a provider where we can get reduced rates, or if we don't like the providers that are given, we still have the option to see our own provider, even if we pay a little bit more. So I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'd rather be given a choice to be able to choose a provider. I just feel that the ACO, I don't know what type of group of doctors are going to be there, or if they're going to be somebody that I actually feel comfortable with, and I would like to be able to, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think that everybody should be given that option to feel, to have the liberty to go with a doctor that they feel more comfortable with, that we should be given that option the way we're given that option now. Even if I feel, I don't know how everybody else feels, I know that he had mentioned that we might have to pay a little bit towards our insurance, eventually.
You'll always have the choice of signing on to the base state and high plan. The ACO, if we adopt it, will just be another choice. But if we go that way, then it would, if you still want to stay on the regular PPO network, then you would pay a little bit more out of your pocket. That's, that's the way it works.
Right, but I kind of feel that, you know, if it's something that's, you know, really expensive, especially like if it's a cancer patient or something, you're kind of forcing the employee to use the ACO, and who knows, like, because we don't know what type of group of doctors those are going to be, the quality. Another concern that we were having over here also is that there's been a lot of confusion with the lab work and stuff, like before we were able to go to a doctor, and if they had in lab, we were able to do the lab there, and everything was taken care of, you would miss a day, and everything was done there. And now with the lab, also, there's issues where sometimes you go to the doctor and you can't get your lab done there because they're not in network providers. So there's a lot of confusion with that, too. So that's a concern. Any other concerns? Anyway, that's what I have to say.
Well, thank you, and I think, I think once, I guess it's for us, or at least for me-
The lab is more of an issue with the physician's office than it is with LabCorp or Quest or any of the other one options, but-
So it's another physician's?
We, we've had issues where a physician's office will send the labs to the hospital or send somebody to NAP to get their labs drawn. In that case, the TPA gets the bill, it's processed as an inpatient service, so now you're subject to deductible and co-insurance.
To deductibles.
We have reached out to the, to the Mid Valley Physicians Group on several occasions, and that shouldn't be happening anymore. But if it does, you can call for Fades, come to my office, and 99% of the time, we're able to take care of it, so, sorry.
Perfect article for your newsletter. I said it's a perfect article for your newsletter.
I sent an email out to our staff yesterday, and some of the folks responded with some concerns. The biggest concern was the turnaround time for being, for the bill being settled with whatever services they were charged for, and some are being turned into collection agencies because they're not being paid on time. The other thing was, we have a person who had cancer probably six or seven years ago, breast cancer, and they didn't want to pay for a mammogram because it was diagnostic. Another person said that they hadn't, they weren't going to pay for the colonoscopy if it came back positive. And that's, they're saying this is what, I know, but I told them I would bring this to y'all's attention and-
That just doesn't make any sense. So they need to call and, you know, call the, you know, call Fades and have them-
The local person, so they quit dealing with the locals. And now they go-
Yeah, they have the computers, they have the screens, they'll be able to tell them everything, so, but that doesn't-
I got to speak.
That doesn't sound right. Now, your question on the diagnostic, well, it's not that we're not going to pay for it, it's some test that they're diagnosing, not preventative, we're subject to your deductible.
But I guess because she, because the hospital is coding him as a diagnosis, of course, because she has, because she had cancer-
It's however the doctor coded it.
She's a breast cancer survivor.
When you've had breast cancer and you have your next mammogram, you have a diagnostic mammogram. A diagnostic mammogram gives a couple more views than a regular mammogram. I was told that I would have to pay more for that, but I did go to Baxton Imaging in Harlingen, and I have not received a bill for that. But it is considered diagnostic under that and not a regular mammogram, so it's not covered under the regular mammogram.
Correct.
So Mike, if you can just look into it, please.
Sure.
And then to, what was her name?
I'm just going to say something because I do have a son who sees specialists.
Hold on, Ms. Standard, real quick. And ma'am, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your name. I know you're Ms. Angie. As far as the ACO, it'd be whatever. I think we would need workshops, especially us, to know exactly how they work and how they either save or not save the money. I do believe in, we should be able to choose our doctors, but I believe some of these ACOs do have a big amount of doctors and specialists that are included. But again, at the end of the day, we want to provide what's best for y'all, and we'll take recommendations, obviously, but at the end of the day, we, we have to financially be able to afford the current, our current, what we currently provide, and I know that's going up. And, and so we have to find ways to continue to provide the best health insurance for y'all. What Mike didn't touch up on, and I'll get to you, but equipment standard, was, I was asking him, you know, as far as MRIs and stuff like that, I asked my wife, my wife is a nurse practitioner, so I said, okay, here in your office. She goes, I said, how is Fades here in your office? Because we do have a lot of employees that go to their clinic. And she says, well, you can't beat the $60 that they get for an MRI or CAT scan, as opposed to maybe some of the other carriers. I won't mention any names because I'm not aware of any other than what we currently have. I know that I do not pay with my personal Blue Cross Blue Shield, I don't pay $60, I pay a lot more. That falls under my deductible, if I'm not mistaken, so there's ways. And just, just know that whatever we decide at the end of the day, it's going to try to be in the best interest of all the employees, not just one, but all. So thank you for your concern.
On that issue with MRIs, Coach, we had before, how much were some of these students paying when they were choosing their own MRIs? I know that we, they were paying a very high dollar amount.
Some of them paid up to $750.
How much?
$750 or $1.
$750, you're not in here.
We'll get them for 60.
The employee gets them for 60.
All employee, yeah. That's nice.
Now they're covered in your athletic insurance.
And I know we do have the best athletic insurance as well for our kids, right?
Yeah, that's, that's also another item that-
Yes, I know.
We do pay a very high amount to be able to provide the very best for athletic insurance.
Let's get back to Ms. Standard, if you don't mind.
Standard, yeah, because I cut her off.
I'm over here, I'm sorry. I just wanted to mention, because I know, you know, since I'm strong in those, I have a son who, and we deal with hospitals in Houston and medications from other states, and the, and I have learned that it's true what you said, it's how the doctors or the hospitals quoted in their paperwork. I have been, you know, stuck in the middle where I'll tell them, I know my insurance covers this, this and that, and then I'll be calling the insurance and telling them, okay, the hospital's telling you this, and then have to call back to the hospital or the doctors and say, they're telling me this. In the end, that communication and how they, how they word it is very important. It could be frustrating when you're just expecting it to get covered, but that communication is going to have to be there when it comes to hospitals and cancers and specialists and things like that, or, or MRIs, that documentation from, you have to have that communication with the middle person, and it gets covered. I have not had any problems, so I'm happy.
Great.
With interest, at least right now.
Real quick on the MRIs. Recently, I had an knee problem, and I had to go to a doctor, the doctor in Edinburgh. Now, they're charging me there a little over $350 for the MRI. Now, I did tell them that we do have the provider over here that could do the MRI over here for the $60 copay. But when I mentioned it to them, they said, no, we need to do it here. And of course, they have the in-house facility, so they wouldn't accept the MRI from the provider that we have here over there. So-
Mike, would that be a choice of the patient?
That's going to be, that's going to be a subject, Mo, for the, Mr. Lopez, for the newsletter, because if your doctor is saying, you need an MRI, but guess what? I have an MRI machine right here. Okay? They need to pay for that MRI machine. Okay? So that's why they're sending you. I mean, and I've had conversations with physicians about this before, I mean, their different magnets are rated differently, okay? But at the end of the day, I spoke to an orthopedic surgeon, at the end of the day, if you need an MRI for your knee, you need to get scoped, I mean, the facility that we have, you know, definitely suffices. If they need something stronger, that means that there's a more advanced case of whatever, and in that case, you may have to go to, into an inpatient facility and get one. It just depends, but, you know, really, it's your choice. I mean, it's one of the, one of the things under the ACA is you can seek medical care for whatever you want, because it's the same, basically, it's probably the same magnet. The radiologist reads it, here you go. So that's, you know, that's what we need to inform our employees that, about, that they do have a choice.
Maybe I should use that line when I sell insurance. No, you need to buy my auto insurance.
This is a question more related to the overall program and the idea of trying to hold costs down, and I'm not sure if it's legal, so that's a disclaimer. But like when we're negotiating with, like for these PPOs or things like that, have we ever considered, maybe, is it possible to get a consortium of like, let's say, school districts in the Mid Valley? So since we would have more, more people being covered, we maybe have more bargaining power to try to hold some of those costs down. I don't know if that's, that's where I meant the crossing boundaries and all that.
Oh, so you want me to answer that?
He had me at hello.
That's, in theory, that's an awesome idea. It can be done. The problem is, is that different school districts in the valleys work with different PPO networks. So we would have to, say, get Westleco, Donna, PSJA, McAllen, get everybody together under one third-party administrator, and then have everybody basically, kind of like the way TRS does it or ERS does it, you know? Everybody in the state has the same insurance card with the same company, so that's what we would have to do similarly, of course, and it's very hard, as you know, to get, you know, school districts to agree on things. If we can't get, you know, if we can't get everybody to agree on who we're going to play on Friday, you know, that's coordinating eight districts to have the same healthcare plan, that's a pretty, pretty tough challenge.
Any other concerns or-
Or remarks?
Or remarks, kind remarks.
The concerns that have been addressed to, to me at the high school have been the drugs for the diabetics. And I know we've done wonderful all these years, providing all these things, but for some reason, this change in the pharmaceutical to where now they have to go through tiers before to the, they get, you know, they don't normally get the diet, the medication the doctor's prescribing, they have to go through certain, that's where they're having issues. Huh? Yeah, the step therapy. That's where they're having issues, and there's been a couple of diabetic patients that have gone through this, and they're being on samples and stuff, and I did bring it up at the insurance committee last time, and I know Mr. LaRosa was going to look into it, but I talked to him, and they're still, they say they're still on the same ballpark, so I don't know. But made, I mean, I had addressed other issues, and I know Mr. LaRosa has brought it, you know, has corrected those things, like the mammograms, that we got extra billings for readings and stuff, that when you were covered, he already addressed that, and a lot of the people are even getting refunded, so we've got that taken care of. Yeah, we're good, we're good. But the diabetic medication is the problem right now.
And just to elaborate on that, that's a plan we have in place right now with the PBM called step therapy. Just so you, just to kind of let you in on that, what that means is it's a cost-saving method, so if there's 10 different insulins, okay, and there's one that costs 50, or $10,000, and there's one that costs $500, if you walk into a doctor's office, if you walk into a pharmacy with a prescription for the one that's 10 grand, well, we want you, or we want you to make sure that none of the other brands that are out there can do the trick that are less expensive to the plan. Now certainly, if a person goes to the step therapy and at the end of the day, this is what they need, then of course, we're going to cover the drug. But that's really between the PBM, which is the clinical, the clinical pharmacist that they have on staff-
Does that fall under the formulary two?
Oh, yes.
That's, that's formulary two.
And some of these insulins are actually specialty medications, so, but the individual, have them keep working.
Well, no. What I've heard today is something that, Mike, I think you can address, everything, all the concerns, the diabetic medication, of course, that step program, how long does that take? Is it, because I know if you're step, they give you medication for a month, and then they step you up, or is-
It's usually, it depends on how the prescription is written, but normally, it's a 30-day supply. But in cases where they're on it for 15 days, if they're really, really feeling, you know, obtuse effects, they can call the doctor, the doctor calls the PBM, and they discuss it with a clinical pharmacist and say, look, it's not working, he's experiencing symptoms A, B, C, and D. Okay, well, look, okay, didn't work, well, let's go on to the next one.
Okay, well, all the concerns and comments that I've heard today, I go through them with my own insurance. As a matter of fact, I pay a lot more money than on some of my medications, and I can't get the medication that I want, and they give me two pills instead of one, and it's We do want to ensure that we are listening, we are here, we're not just trying to cut a buck and, and put lives in danger. And Mike, I want you to, you've done a good job in keeping this board informed, keep it up, but I do want to see a newsletter, and I want you to use your judgment, either do a short one, monthly newsletter, touch, touch on some of the topics that we've discussed, or maybe a monthly and a quarterly, which goes more in depth. You know, I think we all need to be reminded of how to save money, not only for ourselves, how, how to take better care of ourselves, you know, not only with, by the doctor, maybe put in a health advice or something, you know, just something to, to keep us, keep everybody in the loop of our insurance. And I want to thank Fades for being here today, and I know he heard every concern, and Mike, Mike, you and Mr., our Fades rep can, can work it out and-
Yes, sir.
Get us some, some good, good, a good outcome on this. And if nobody else has a comment, we'll close this workshop with that.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. The time is 4:53. 4:55. The time is 5 o'clock, and there being no call, the meeting scheduled for 5 o'clock today will have to be rescheduled. So there will be no board meeting today. Thank you.